I want to call to order the Seabrook City Council meeting, regular city council meeting of Tuesday, July 16th. It is 5:00, 6:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge.
My pledge is that the United States of America and the Republic of America stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of Texas flag, our pledges to the Texas sections. One state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, item 1.0, public comments and announcements. At this time, we would like to listen to any member of the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of four minutes for each speaker. Shall be limited to city business or city-related business or matters of general public interest and shall not include any personal attacks. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, members may not discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. When your name is called, please come to the podium, state your name and address clearly into the microphone before making your comments. I would also like to ask that we keep some decorum and keep the cheering and the booing down, so I appreciate it. Okay, Jordan Appleby.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jordan Appleby.
Turn your, turn the mic up.
Oh, just kidding. On the wooden?
You're a tall one.
On the podium.
There you go.
The new word for wooden podium is "wooden," in case anybody's wondering. So my name is Jordan Appleby. I'm the pastor for the Saltwater Revival Pirate Church, which takes place every Sunday morning at 11 o'clock at the Barge 295. And as of Hurricane Barrel, we are displaced. We don't have a place to come together and worship. So what we're asking today is that the city grant a temporary variance to allow the barge to use temporary restroom facilities to facilitate operations in the yard, which, other than minor cleanup, was not affected by the hurricane unlike the barge itself, which has recently been raised from the bottom of the lake. We just are asking for that temporary variance for them to use the temporary restroom facility so that we can continue to have worship there in the yard, and a temporary variance for them to be able to use food truck to cook food so that we can have food for our congregants while we are there. It's our Sunday ritual. We get together, we praise Jesus, we eat fried cheese curds, and we talk to each other, and we enjoy fellowship. We're very grateful to the barge for allowing us to do that thus far. We're coming up on almost two years of being able to have service there, and it's just, it's been flooring to have to find a new place every week to have service. The temporary restrooms that we're talking about are the same type of temporary restrooms that they use at the Houston rodeo, same type of temporary restrooms that they use at the celebration of Seabrook, the same type of temporary restrooms that are currently at the Seabrook Boys Baseball Field. So we're not asking for anything that's never been done here before. As to a safety hazard, I'm 37 years old, have no problem using the porta potty with a handwashing station. So I'm pleading on behalf of our church to this council, to this city, to make these temporary variances, and on behalf of the 32 employees that are displaced from the barge who currently have no means of income because the barge is not allowed to open and operate with these temporary variances. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Jordan. Wayne Delchafino.
Not to start on a sour note, Mayor, but the Open Meetings Act allows council members to discuss with speakers. It just doesn't allow deliberation, so that's one correction. Second, my office called, and I'll get to my point, my office called your city secretary this afternoon to look at campaign records, and she advised us that we had to file a request under the Open Records Act, which gives the city 10 days to respond. That also is not the law. The law is that election records, campaign records, you know this, are available for inspection by any of these folks out here during any regular business day. So I left a message for your city secretary. She's there, I'll tell her directly. If you don't let me inspect the records, we're going to have a problem. Now let me get to why I'm here. Look, I've been around, as you guys know, pretty long time, covered a lot of hurricanes over the years. And I said this last night when I was helping these folks in a rally, that was, I gotta admit, a lot more people showed up than I expected. And I think it shows the depth of the feelings of these people, that 150, 200 folks would come out on an evening to support them. But one of the things that I've always found to be, and I said the word disgusting last night, and I kind of think that, is that sometimes city governments use catastrophes, disasters, to take advantage of getting rid of businesses they do not want. It's always something that, as a journalist in this town for 5,000 years, has really offended me. I saw it in Kima, where the city tried to keep Hispanic families from rebuilding so they could buy their homes on the cheap, okay? I've seen it all over the place. I don't think you guys want that, and I think you also have to recognize there is a thing called landmarks. I'll be the first to admit, as I did last night, that when the barge used to be called the Turtle Club, I went and drank there, had a good time, great place. Look, every town has a landmark, something they're known for. It's, to me, it's an historical marker to a certain degree, right? You've been there like 50 years. How many tens of thousands of people have enjoyed that place? People that bring money into the economy, because they don't just go there. They may go to a restaurant nearby, they may go to a store, right? There is an economic benefit to that place. Now, I also know, covering governments for a long time, that government could come up with the biggest bunch of nonsense to try to keep people from just trying to rebuild after a storm, play all kinds of games, how much you damaged, right? Sorry, we can't give you a temporary variance, even though we know that's the only thing you need to get back to business, raise money, keep your people employed, you know, try to recoup some of your investment. These people invested a lot of money in Seabrook. So I came last night to support them, and I came back today to tell you guys, look, I don't want to get too deep into Seabrook government. I'm more than happy to, and I've already started today, and since I've already run into opposition to ask for records, I'm going to ask for more, because that's the way I roll, okay? But, but in the meantime, there is a very simple solution to this. The portable bathroom thing, I can't think in the 50 or so years I've been in Houston, how many events I've gone to at the portable rodeo, the rodeo with portable bathrooms? Everybody's got portable bathrooms. So let's sort of get past the portable bathroom excuse. Give these folks some portable bathrooms, let them reopen, and then if you want to argue about long-term things, argue about long-term things. But to deny people who are victims, these guys are victims, these people are victims of a hurricane, do you want to get that rep? Because I've heard that before, right? The city of no, people call it. Really? I mean, let's move on to some more important issues. Let's protect these people, let's give them the opportunity to rebuild, then come up with the discussion of what the long-term fix is. I know that you might want to have something else over there other than a bar, okay? I get it. But it's there, it's a landmark, and there's a lot of people that want to fight to protect it. Mayor, council, and I see you.
Thank you, Wayne. Carly Robinson. I got him.
Good afternoon, Mayor, city councilmen, and city staff members.
Carly, can I, can you speak up and give me your name and address?
Carly Robinson. I live at 104 Sherling Drive, Seabrook, Texas.
Thank you.
I'm here today to talk on behalf of Barge 295. My family owns Barge 295, and ever since we have taken ownership over the barge, we have put so much effort into making it a enjoyable place to have a nice meal, enjoy music, and be right next to Clear Lake. Since Hurricane Barrel has hit our community, Barge 295 has had, been significantly impacted. Because our business was impacted, all of our employees are being forced to find new jobs since we're not allowed to open in a limited capacity. While we are repairing the actual barge itself, we should be able to stay open in the yard. We need to figure a way to have our employees come back and make a living for their families. We need to make the best out of every day and continue to bond with our community in every way possible and make Seabrook a closer community. Please take this into consideration and help a small family business stay open. Thank you.
Thank you, Carly. Robert Lemey.
Robert Lemey, 1830 Lakeside Drive. My family and I, we've lived in Seabrook for roughly eight years. We're on Lakeside Drive, we're close proximity to Barge 295. The city, the city manager, the city council, their job is to protect the citizens of the town and the community. And many of the neighbors in Lake Cove, Lakeside Drive, where we live up front, Wildwood, Lakewood Yacht Club, have been affected by Barge 295 over the past five, six years. We've been here multiple times with all the problems that have arisen from it. The city has had to take legal action multiple times. We've had to deal with overflow of cars, we've had overflow of customers that come down the street, defecate in people's properties, urinate, because of the lack of facilities to handle the overflow that they continue to have. Unfortunately, the hurricane came along, damaged their property and their business. That's unfortunate. Most people have insurance and go that route, but they also have permits when they do these things, so they don't just go and do things without getting permission. And that's been going on since the very beginning, when barge took over. Turtle Club was there before, and there were some problems, but never like what we've experienced over the past five years. You know, and every time you guys give them an inch, they'll take a mile, and, you know, we've still had issues with the noise, the music, and it almost seems like, hey, screw you guys, let's turn it up even louder and annoy you even more. So I don't particularly think that they should operate out of the parking lot and the yard, which was originally built with no permits until they got slapped. And I'd love to talk to the media and Mr. Delchafino and let him get our side of the story, because there's three sides to every story. And it would be great if he heard about from all the other people that live in the neighborhood that are affected. And it's unfortunate that their employees lost their jobs, but there are other jobs, there are other places to be employed, and unfortunately, they're just going to have to go out and find a place. Have a good night.
Thank you, Robert. All right, keep some decorum, people. Tim Williams.
My name's Tim Williams. I live at 1805 Larabee. Like Rob said, we've been here multiple times over the years, fighting with the barge, the yard mainly. Somebody had mentioned their victims. I feel like a victim, living 75 yards or 100 yards from their stage, with my walls vibrating every time they play music and nothing I can do about it. So, you know, I don't know how many times we have to come up here and do this over and over again. I feel very sorry for the employees, you know, I really do, my heart goes out to them. But like Rob says, I think if you give them an inch, they'll take a mile, and I'm just here to support city council and hopefully not allow the temporary bathrooms. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Jennifer Fogarty.
Hi, good evening. Jennifer Fogarty, 1830 Lakeside Drive. So I do risk assessment for a living. I did it for NASA for 17 years, I do it in commercial sector now, and, you know, you got to take into consideration a lot of factors when you're trying to make a decision. And I think the points that have been made are worth listening to, but fundamentally, we've lost trust as citizens of Seabrook, particularly in the Lakeside Drive area. We've tried to understand what the commercial incentives are, but that has to be weighed against the quality of life of the citizens who pay the taxes. So I think it's really important to, as half of a couple, my husband, we own a small business in another town, and we have to cooperate with the citizens, the city, the county, and the state, because there are permits, ordinances, and a framework to keep everybody safe. That includes the employees, that includes the citizens, that includes the owner, because we've had to learn really hard lessons over the years, decades, of people being come, being injured and being made ill by businesses who don't function properly and ethically and have the right facilities to accommodate numbers of people. There was a comment made earlier, because people are being kept in the overflow area, thinking they were being discriminated against for a certain reason. Well, there's a sign on the door about the fire marshal. Not only can't you block an exit, but only so many people can be in this room, because if the really bad thing happens, we all have to get out in a certain amount of time. And when you try to get out, if there's another 100 people behind you, that starts a stampede. So these things are in place for a reason. I worked in a big bureaucracy at NASA, I understand the frustration, and if you want a solution, you have to bring it forward and you have to do the hard work. That means you go to the city, the state, the county, and you find out what the requirements are, and if you think they're wrong, you bring forward a motion to have that scrutinized and you bring your rationale, and it's going to take an investment to do that. But that's the hard work. It's the hard work we put in every day to make sure our family is on the right side of things, that we're capable of dealing with six days with no electricity, with four rescue dogs in the house that we couldn't put anywhere else because everybody else didn't have, you know, capability. We are out the money for vacations, we are out the money for the days we had to take vacation because we weren't at work. So these things that you're suffering from, you're not a victim. We're all here going through the same thing, and we're trying to understand how to make our way forward, but we have to understand how you're going to do that and be able to gain some trust, which also means that you don't start social media campaigns with misinformation and disparage people, particularly people you have to work with. That undercuts everything, you know? And also, given some of the rhetoric I've heard, you know, it's violent in nature, it's hostile in nature. Why would you do that if you're trying to get us on your side? And to what also has been said, if you want to have an event, you've got to manage the traffic flow, the numbers of people you've got, where they're parking, and the noise level. That's what it's like to be respectful when you have a business that is in an area where people live, a residential area. Tim Williams is example A. You know, there's a time of night where it comes to an end, and I just don't think it's appropriate that we have to come back here and rediscuss this. Like, where's the business plan? How are you going to do, go about doing it? Where's your checklist for all the things that need to be accomplished? And where's your solutions for the things you don't agree with? That's something we can talk about. That's a place we can move forward, because this is not moving us forward. This is locked up. Appreciate the time, and I hope we can find a way forward.
Thank you, Jennifer. Christopher Israel.
Christopher Israel, 1426 Cottage Cove Court, Seabrook, Texas, proud resident of Seabrook. And I hope I don't miss them as she leaves, as she brought up that whole six days with no power and the struggle we all went through. Like her, I struggled. I just left MD Anderson that morning from surgery and sat at my house with no power after surgery at MD Anderson. So yes, we are struggling, just like you, ma'am. Anyway, I'm sorry. It's not about her. So, good afternoon, city council. Appreciate you having this hearing. So I'm just going to rattle off some numbers here. Houston Cook-Off, three-day total, 2,553, 185,000 people. Houston Buzz Fest, one day total, 17,000 people. Houston Reggae Fest, two-day total, 100,000 people. These are all outdoor events that utilize portable restrooms. Barge Parking holds 203 vehicles. The yard, max capacity, 550, like she brought up, and a very good point, the fire marshal does state a max capacity just for that reason. We do not want to overrun the capacity and put people in danger. That's why the fire marshal made that capacity at 550. Texas Health Code, which also, Seabrook, we follow Harris County, since we do not have our own health department. I contacted them today, spoke with them. Health and Safety Code, 341.068. Publicly and privately owned facilities where the public congregates shall be equipped with sufficient temporary or permanent restrooms to meet the needs of the public at peak hours. Section C of the same code defines a restroom. Restroom can be known as a toilet, a chemical toilet, which we all know as a porta john, or a water closet. Texas Administrative Code, 25, Part 1, Chapter 25, Subchapter G, Rule 295.166. This code reflects, word for word, verbatim, the Health and Safety Code, 341.068. That's Harris County. Difference is, Rule 295.167 reflects the need for handwashing stations while utilizing portable restrooms, the need for how many handwashing stations per portable restroom. All this is stating here is that there's no law saying that we cannot put a variance to put portable restrooms to put a business in operation. Barge is not just a bar. It's the community. I've been here since it was Turtle Club. Barge was the very first place, and I'm sure you remember, after Harvey, that came up and served food for free for the citizens of Seabrook. They were the first ones. Barge is a meeting place for friendship, from camaraderie, where, like myself, the local veteran community come to meet and talk and get our own problems off our chests instead of dealing with the other ways. Barge is also a spiritual place where the Saltwater Pirate Church meets, brings the locals together to spread the word of God and Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, to those of us who do not feel going comfortable into these mega church environments. Seabrook is a small community. We love Seabrook, that's why we're here. We love our local bars, we love our local restaurants. These places are what makes Seabrook Seabrook. Seabrook, sorry, very small writing, the barge here recently was actually featured on the front page of Houston Hotspots. This not only brings business to the barge, but like Mr. Delchafino said, that's also going to bring business to other restaurants. People are going to see our community, the beauty of our community. Can I, 30 seconds?
30 seconds.
Okay. We love barge, we hope you listen to us, but, side note, subject R1, R2, the housing off of Toddville that we're talking about putting in, we're against it.
Not exactly sure what that was, but good job.
Oh, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, different, different subject. Appreciate it. Thank you. Amy Perella.
Bring this down. Hi, everyone. Amy Perella, 650 North Flamingo Drive. Most people here know me, a lot of you all know me as well, except I only know a few of you personally, so I'm sorry for that. I wish I had better relationships with you all, because I've been here 10 years. I've seen somewhat change, would I call it progress? I'm not sure, except for the fact that we have a giant highway coming through, which I understand was a necessity for the population south of us that is being built now. My, the reason I wanted to speak today was because, yes, I am a huge supporter of barge. I'm a huge supporter of any business in this city. We need as much as we can get in this city. We don't have money coming into this city right now. We don't have tourism, we don't have people who say, oh, let me go to Seabrook today and grab a bite to eat. They do say that about the barge, though. It was even featured, I believe, in Galva, in Texas Monthly, as the only floating bar in Texas. It is a landmark, as someone stated earlier. Why on earth would we keep a business that is a part of a community, and not only just a bar, per se, but it is literally a place where worship is done, families go and hang out, we watch the sailing, we watch the boats, we spend time with friends who have become like family? Why wouldn't you all give a small variance to assist them during a time of need? We're all in a time of need, and you know what we've done as a community? We've helped each other. We've offered up places to stay. People are washing clothes at other people's homes. People are literally doing what we do as a small community who love each other. And to the people who left earlier, to Robert and his wife, I mean, I understand, they have issues with noise. You know what? My house rumbles every freaking night, because there's a power plant, I'm sorry, not a power plant, but there's a plant that was built and allowed by this city to be done. So does anybody complain about that? No, because there's nothing to be done about that. Seabrook got its money. That's left. My reason for coming up here today is because things have been going, however they've been going, with this city council and our city manager for quite some time. It's time for some change. Guys, we need to move forward. We don't want to be the town that is touted as the city of no. No, 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 no. No to businesses, no to this, no to mom and pops, no to help, no to this. Why? Why do we want to be known as that? We're a small, loving, spirited community with people from all over, and people from all over come here. Let's keep that up. Let's continue to grow and become what we should. Take us to the next level. That's what you're here to do for us. As a voted and elected board and as a paid city manager, you're here to take us to the next level. So I am asking, please, give them their variance to make it through this hard time, to get us past this. There are no noise issues, that's been dealt with. There are no concerts happening that are crazy, and you guys were going to have Margaritaville come in, talk about noise, traffic, and whatever else. That was going to be absurd to compare the two. So, again, I implore you, please, do the right thing, do not have bias, because that's what it seems like to a lot of us right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Patrick. Patrick Robinson.
Patrick Robinson, Barge 295. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and city staff. It's with a heavy heart that I'm here today. Our business has suffered from Hurricane Barrel. 30 employees are out of business, or, I'm sorry, out of work. The community events that we support are displaced, and we still, are still in the middle of recovery efforts to determine the best path forward. I'm requesting that city council instruct the city manager and city attorney to put together an agreement that'll allow a temporary variance, the temporary variance is needed to reopen our business. Sean, Nick, and Gail have already researched the topic and could quickly draft an acceptable format that city council could get behind. You know, thank you for that consideration. You know, we've been here quite a few times, obviously. We understand the impact we've made on the community, and we have tried to reach out and come up with practical solutions, and we're still here to try to do that, right? If there's anything that can be done, we're willing to listen and we're willing to try it. We need you guys to help, you know, pull it together and get behind something that we can all agree on, to try to get some change to help with some of the people that are impacted. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, Patrick. Ray Villanueva. Ray Villanueva.
Hi, everybody, I'm Ray Villanueva. Me and my wife Brooke own Merlion Restaurant here in town. Wanted to thank, I've seen a bunch of you guys up there, I've seen a bunch of y'all up there, thank y'all so much for the business. Patrick came to me a few weeks ago, and he was very upset about things going on in town, and me and my wife decided to get behind him and support him. He's a small business owner just like me. He knows as well as I do, when you do things like this, you put your heart and soul into these businesses. You put every dime you've got, you put your life at risk, not only your life, your family's life. He's got a lot of employees that don't have a place to go right now to make money. I wish I could hire them all temporarily, and I would do it, and get everybody a paycheck coming, unfortunately, I don't have that. But anyway, I just wanted to show my support, and it seems like, I mean, there's some middle ground here that can be gained, you know? It's, nothing's written in stone. He got up here and said he's willing to negotiate with you guys, but I would like to see some more give from, from you guys up here, instead of just saying no, let's say, okay, we can't do this, but maybe we can do this. You know, what can we do? Instead of just saying no, what can we do to go forward? I mean, that's a great plan, let's get people back to work. I've been to concert, concerts at his place, they've always been amazing, I don't particularly care for them, my wife loves them, so I get drunk up there. But when I see her smile, it makes me smile. So, I've made a lot of memories already at his place, I've made a lot of memories at Turtle Club, and made a lot of memories at my place. From what I understand also, there's already a noise ordinance in town. I've had the cops at my place on some wild weddings that we've had. They told me to turn it down, and I turn it down, and I abide by the rules. I think he's willing to do the same. I mean, we're all grownups here, we're fighting about bathrooms. I mean, come on, we've got bigger things on our list to worry about here in Seabrook, way bigger things. He's got the parking, I've been there myself, never had a problem, had plenty of porta potties, had plenty of waitstaff, didn't have a problem getting out of the parking lot. I understand there are some individuals in neighborhoods that have some problems, let's address that. Let's, let's go forward, like the other lady was saying, and make good things happen here. I mean, it's a great town. I've invested 17 years of my life here with my business, and it's been good to me, and we try to get back to the community. Every time you guys need something, food donated, or whatever, we do it. It's a time right now to pull together. We just had a horrible storm. To fragment this city like this is not good. It's not a good look, there's been bad publicity, and I mean, this is our home, this is where we live, so I think it's time to come together and have some, some great negotiations. If you guys can get together and be like, okay, this is what we can do. You know, you can't do this, but we can do this. He's just asking for bathrooms, he's not even asking them for them permanently, he just wants them for a little while to get his business running again. I mean, that's not a lot to ask, it's really not. I've seen some of you guys up there, and I've seen you guys having good times up there. It's an amazing place. So, I think he's doing good things for the city. Did he have some, some bad decisions initially? He did, but we're through that now, and let's get over that. If we keep going back and concentrating on the things that went wrong, we can't move forward. So let's, let's concentrate on negotiations and get this guy open again, and, I mean, I'm ready for the next concert. Thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you, Ray. Linda Spieth.
So, some of you might know me, and some of you don't, so if you don't, my family, the Fams, we own two fish markets down on the waterfront. So just to give you a little bit of a history, I'm here, barge is one of my customers, I'm not doing any business with them right now because they're not buying anything from us, because they're shut down. So I do need their business. Back in 2009, 2010, when the big hurricane came, we came back the next day, Hurricane Ike, I believe, we lost everything. All we came back was just a pile of dirt. Our parking lot back then was just dirt, it wasn't even cement, it wasn't even concrete. And, while we do have insurance, so our insurance is fighting, they're not paying us, and in the meanwhile, we have employees just like them, and we have to go back to work, taxes is still, needs to be paid, we don't get a break, so we were down for two years trying to rebuild. So while that happened, we're waiting for either Windstorm's gonna pay, Windstorm say, "No, that was flooding," so Flood's gonna pay, Flood say, "No, that was Windstorm," so back and forth, back and forth. So six months, we were out of work, no money come in, and nobody was paying us. So, I see back then FEMA was bringing in temporary trailers for these homes that was totally destroyed, they had no place to go, that was rebuilt, so these homes, these temporary trailers were sitting in their driveway. So then my siblings and my family, my parents, say, "You know what? Why don't we bring in a temporary building, a temporary trailer?" Well, it's not a temporary trailer, it's a building, it's commercial, it's a commercial temporary trailer. We asked the city if we can do that, you people say no. So then, we hired an attorney, and he said, "Wait, wait, 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 they're rebuilding in the back." We were building, we were in the process of rebuild, and so it's okay for FEMA to bring in temporary trailer for the resident, but not for us. So needless to say, you guys granted us two trailers, because we have two fish markets, so two trailers, we were there, with the condition, when hurricane comes, you have to move your trailer, because it's a temporary building. So we said, "Okay, that's fine." So, we ran our business for maybe eight months, and then hurricane season came. It was just a season, at that time, there was no hurricane coming in the Gulf, nothing was brewing. You demanded us to shut down because we're in hurricane season. We say, "No, there's no hurricane, we're trying to make money here, so we can pay our bills and employees that were working." You file a lawsuit against us, you took us to court, because we didn't, oh, before you did that, you shut off our main water line, so we can run a fish market without water, so we have to bring in temporary portable water, that means we have to pay for that. The health department let us run our business, but you guys didn't. So we went to court, and I'd like to tell you guys, we won. We will grant it, and we stay for an additional six more months. You guys did that. That was the American dream, we came here, we could have been on welfare, I could have been, whatever, but we didn't, we wanted to work, we worked seven days a week, we were able to rebuild. And what the insurance paid us, just enough money, because our building was old, just enough money to pay for the parking lot and the foundation. And I have my tax statement here, the city of Seabrook, I pay over eight grand for the city of Seabrook last year for property tax. That's the most out of Harris County, Harris County was 5,000, you guys charged me $7,800. So I just want you to know, please, grant them, let them be in business. Next month is back to school, these people have families, their employees got families, kids, back to school, clothing, put food on their table, so... That's it, I ran out of time. But anyway, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Linda. Jonathan Byers. Jonathan Byers.
Jonathan Byers. Jonathan Byers, 3663 Nassau Parkway, just moved in May, so I'm kind of a little new to the address.
My wife and I moved here from Pasadena, almost four years ago, because all of the community here, I grew up in League City, I graduated from high school, high school from Clear Creek, I've been at Clear Creek High School in 1999. Before that, I actually went right here to Seabrook Intermediate School. I've been a part of this community my entire life. Six years ago, I got my real estate license. Two and a half years ago, I decided that I was gonna move into the commercial sector. I now do absolutely nothing but sell and lease commercial real estate. When my wife and I chose to move here to the Seabrook area, it was because of how much we loved this community. But I moved here as a residential agent, not understanding fully how business is operated and what all happened in there. Now two of my biggest customers, and soon to be a third, are also local, right here. Everybody knows who Texas Flex Fitness is, that's one of my best customers. Anybody here that's want the best burger you've ever had in your life can go down here to Zane's Originals, that's my customer. Jeff Chastain, LaCrishelik Chastain, asked me the other day, "How is this amazing shopping center, this brand new and absolutely beautiful, in front of 400 units, empty? Why is it that when I drive past any of these commercial buildings on 146, even prior to the bypass going up, are dang near empty? How come our Seabrook waterfront, after Ike was gone, has come through here, is empty? These people keep saying that we don't want to be a city of no. We are all taxpayers here, and I feel so badly for you people on Lakeside Drive. I understand, but we have given barge hurdle after hurdle after hurdle after hurdle, and they have stepped up their game and jumped every single hurdle y'all thrown at them. Y'all even went through and spent an enormous amount of money on sound testing to only prove that their last concerts did not break and violate the laws of our cities. And yet, we still can't stop and look at this. Just heard from Linda, through her testimony, from what she had to go through in Ike. Emory Seafood is one of the best places in this area you can get seafood from. Now we're talking about barge, and Pat, and Mike, and Mike, who, yeah, guess what? They didn't have power at home either, and neither did the people that worked for them, and so neither did I, and I feel bad for those people for not having it, but now, not only do they not have any power, but they don't get to make any money? So when the power comes on, they have a place to stay? Guys, this city has so much dang potential, where we don't have to rely on just the tax dollars of our citizens that live here. We have the potential to smoke Kima. We have the potential to make Laporte look like a flick, but instead, we are constantly losing our businesses to Kima and Webster, who say, "You can't do it? Guess who can?" Guys, I live here, I love this place, I don't plan on moving anytime soon, but when you guys look at this place and you say, "We are not a city of no," all you have to do is drive by any shopping center in this entire place and ask, "Then why is it empty?" Y'all have a nice night.
Angela Jackson. Angela Jackson.
Angela Jackson.
Chief, sir.
My name is Angie Jackson. I live at 3720 Coral Reef Drive in Seabrook, so just within a couple of miles of Barge 295. My husband and I moved here 10 years ago, after being transferred, doing a lot of looking around before we decided where to locate, and just really fell in love with this area. But since then, learned a lot of things about the area, including what all has already been said. It seems, you know, United States city agencies are here to serve the public and their businesses in their cities, not to be a hindrance, and it seems we're finding out there's a history of the city government here not aiding the businesses and stating parameters for buildings and facilities that are not completely true or required. If the most pressing issue with the barge is not having the bathrooms, then allow the temporary variance for the portable toilets in the yard until a barge can be repaired or replaced. And like other people have said, you know, the rodeo is an example, among many other county and city celebrations and festivals that utilize these kind of toilets, and, I mean, too numerous to mention. And it feels like if Seabrook doesn't change its direction, with the highway changes around the city, in a short while, the city of Seabrook will be like other small towns that were once bustling with businesses and tourism, but now struggling to survive. And then the only option is to raise taxes, which none of us that live here want. So, we feel like you have a gem in attraction and entertainment with Barge 295. We know numerous people that come from all over the Houston area and beyond that, just to go there to be entertained. Government should be looking at what's best for the public overall, and not just a few privileged voters, since all of our votes are supposed to carry the same weight. And these great people and their employees deserve not to be kicked when they're down after the storm that we just had. Like other people said, you know, I know I lost everything in all my refrigerators and freezers, as did most everybody here, and to think that I didn't even have an income to do something about that afterwards is, I mean, that's, that's just wrong. So, I think they should be granted the variance so they can get back to business and pay their employees and rebuild.
Kelly Stewart.
Hello, Kelly Stewart, 2510 Hollybrook Drive, Seabrook, Texas. Most of what I wanted to say has already been said. I will start saying that I spent the last few days talking to the people of Seabrook who are struggling, and I needed a place to set up where everybody could easily come through and pick up food and water and items, and they, the barge kindly let us set up a little food drive there, people just pick up. While we were there, some members of the Pirate Church swayed by to check on us, and suggested that we walk over to the sailboats right there behind Cabo, and where the woman had passed away, and these were the gentlemen that had pulled the husband to safety, and, and, you know, they're, they're really, really struggling anyway, they're, they're having a really hard time. I've been helping them out for the last few days, but barge also has let me host benefits for family members of children who are very, very sick, or even have passed away, to do research for their particular child, brain cancer. I mean, they've never charged me a dime, they've always just opened their doors to anybody that's ever asked. But I did have something written, and I will say, because I do live here, and I love this community, and if I don't say what I need to say, then I'll feel like I should have. So, "I chose to live in this town to raise my family six years ago. I always loved the charms of Seabrook. We live near the Seabrook Trails, and our family enjoys the parks, pool, library, fishing, all in walking distance. Lately, we are losing some of our wonderful amenities. I worry how much more we will lose. How much more will it change as our taxes rise and our charming local businesses and amenities are lost? Why would the city do anything in their power to keep that tax money coming into Seabrook? We have already lost, we've already lost some to our neighboring towns who are harboring our displaced and beloved Pirate Church. Please know that our eyes are open, and we are asking you to please listen to us. Thank you."
Thank you, Kelly. Andrea Wilson. Andrea Wilson.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. Thank you for letting me speak today. And of course, I'm speaking on behalf of the barge. She just touched on it a few minutes ago, but I'm also representing the Longhorn Project at Johnson Space Center. I am the chairman of the Board of Directors, and we have provided educational programs to youth since 2000, since 1996. We've had over 90,000 students that have come through the Longhorn Project, which is based on, on the premises of Johnson Space Center, NASA. So a couple of years ago, the owners of the barge and I got together, and they opened up their hearts and their wallets to let us have a fundraiser for our nonprofit. In the last two years, we raised a significant amount of money, and we're scheduled to do another concert in October where we would make more money. The money that we make is keeping our doors open to this educational program that has also been a landmark for the city. Your kids, if they've been third to fourth grade for the last 20-something years, they probably came through the program. It's the only one of its kind. It's an agriculture and STEM program. And without the money that we raise for our nonprofit, we can't keep our doors open. And they also help other youth organizations like the Kids in Paper. And so it's not just the employees is so important, the vendors that bring in the alcohol and the food and the paper products, they're all losing money. But it's also the extra people that you help with. People don't even know what they do for these nonprofits. And like the lady said before, for the person, the family member that had cancer, I mean, they are giving out to this community a great deal. I did, I forgot to say my address. It's 18322 Ann Drive, Houston, Texas, which is actually in the city of Webster. I have lived here more than 35 years. I've been eating at Seabrook Classic Cafe since before my son was born, and he's going to be 34 years old. My vet is in Seabrook, Dr. Peterson. So we live in this area, even though my house is in this area, this is our area. And, you know, for us to be, you know, facing not having our concert in October or the Kids in Paper not having theirs in September, it is quite devastating because we don't have another avenue to make those kind of funds in one evening. And so that's kind of why I'm here, is just really on behalf of the nonprofits that they support. I mean, these are some of the most generous people, and look at their faces, I almost start crying. They are some of the most generous people. And, you know, we're talking about the history and about the Turtle Club and like, "I have great memories, and I hope you don't remember me." So you see, drive up in our big yellow ski boat. But now, you know, I've been in this community for a long time, and this is a landmark. It is our home to community, you know, to togetherness and community entertainment. And, you know, what's a few bathrooms going to hurt until they can figure out their big game plan? But, you know, it's like, I know there's been differences between the city council and, and the owners, but sometimes you just gotta say, "Put it behind you and move on." Life is too short, you know, and we don't want to have any regrets when we, you know, when we can avoid something like this. I mean, you're affecting a lot of lives, and you've heard a lot of people plead to you to give them the variance that they need. These are wonderful people, and they bring together the best of the best. And so let us keep on going. So again, thank you for the time, and I hope you vote.
Thank you, Andrea. Angela Cervantes.
Good evening, Seabrook leadership. For years, I sat quietly, and not so quietly, at these council meetings. With a demanding full-time job, two active children, and other community involvement, this is not a world I wanted to be immersed in. As I was hopeful we could address our issue and go back to our peaceful lives, unfortunately, as I sat and listened, I realized one impropriety, then another, then another, until my inbox was full of open records and city documents that drew up like a dreadful connect-the-dots picture, full of complacency, complicity, cronyism, and the list of C-words go on. I have watched droves of angry and disappointed residents please their case and then go away quietly after being pacified with no true resolution. Here are a couple of clips from the April 2nd council meeting, which shows how you, our city leadership, truly feel. This first clip is regarding the Red Oak Acres Waterline Project, in which Councilwoman Rasko simply requests communication from the contractors as they traverse and excavate our properties. Ah, turn my sound off.
I mean, if the residents don't want it, the water lines, we can take care of that too.
So if we don't want water lines, they can take care of that. Hmm, let them eat cake? This is the same nonessential water line project that was approved to restart less than 24 hours after Hurricane Barrel ravaged our community, resulting in a busted main gas pipeline and the possibility of another evacuation. Another indignant clip in response to Councilwoman Rasko's concern about the city's lack of an economic development director and why Seabrook is not promoting new business. This should be especially interesting to the residents west of 146, in or near Lake Cove, that have repeatedly defended their properties from warehouses, trucking yards, high-density development, nothing that brings value to our community.
I mean, if the residents don't want it, the water lines, we can take care of that.
And they're all on the east side because the west side isn't developable because everybody comes out in droves whenever we try and bring something into the east side or the west side of 146. They don't want anything built there.
No, they do. They want a grocery store.
Which is available, but nobody in Lake Cove wants anything built up against their houses.
You have attacked a beloved Seabrook establishment over and over and over again by using our taxpayer funds to drown them in legal fees, pencil-whip them with false regulations such as the FEMA bathroom rule, and even rewrite sound ordinances since they were actually in compliance with the old ones. With egos aside, this could be an economic dream and huge revenue base for Seabrook as people have traveled from all over the state to attend the barge functions. Why not pair up like you all did in 2017 when Merlion was rebuilding for the betterment of the city, as the EDC document states? If land is scarce and the city needs revenue, then this is an obvious solution. Your egos have spoken. City leadership has an agenda and nothing else matters. You have allowed our city manager to use tax funds to go after a sitting council member for installing a pre-discussed and approved flagpole at the Veterans Memorial after he began questioning the city manager publicly, berated a neighbor that tirelessly devoted time to a community garden because he became vocal regarding a $200,000 deficit between the contract he selected and the one pushed through by you all, which was ultimately forced by Councilwoman Rasko and threatened recall to be overturned, which it was overturned, by the way. Spent $30,000 on a road that is almost exclusively used by a private yacht club, Lakewood Yacht Club, that complains about the barge. And most egregiously and recently, abandoned thousands of Seabrook residents during a declared disaster with almost no communication, assistance, or even acknowledgement for nearly five days, besides meaningless and inconsistent Facebook posts that most of us were unable to even access. We tuned into nearby cities for updates and hung our hopes on an exhausted and selfless lineman that happened to live in our area. This is the apex. We are done. Our city manager has exhausted her welcome in the city of Seabrook, and any other city leadership not willing to support the wishes of our battered community, y'all are soon to follow. Thank you.
We'll go on with the agenda. 2.0 consent agenda. 2.1, approve the minutes of the July 2nd, 2024 regular city council meeting and the July 2nd, 2024 joint city council meeting and planning and zoning commission.
Excuse me, did we go past 1.1?
Oh, all right. Yeah, we did. I'm sorry. All right, let's go back to 1.1. 1.1. Report from city, from Mayor, city management, city staff council concerning health, safety...
You just skipped another people that have signed up to speak.
Oh, there's one more? I'm sorry.
Rick King, Richard King.
Richard, Richard King?
There's one more.
No, this is...
Oh, Rick King.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't pass that. Rick King, please, sorry.
My name is Rick King. I live at 1306 Marina Bay Drive, Kima. They say I live on the fun side of the bridge. I'm, I'm one of the pastors at Saltwater Revival Pirate Church. And I got up here and spoke a couple of years ago, I guess it was almost two years ago, right after we had gotten started. And at the time, we were just getting going. I've been doing non-traditional ministry for about 20 years. So I've done this in a lot of places in different ways, and the barge actually contacted us to do it there. We didn't contact them, they contacted us. Since that time, we have over 100 members. We, this last broadcast that we did on Facebook from the barge has 985 views. We reach a lot of people from the barge, but we don't get to anymore. We were very lucky this last weekend, a business in Laporte actually let us do our service up there, and they donated all of their money to the barge to try to help them. And we just, you know, I own my own business in Pasadena that's been there since 1958. So I've been around a lot of business people. I've never seen harder-working people than the Robertsons, in my case. They, and when they have something happen, they just dig in, put their heads down, and go get it done. They don't ask for help, they're not asking for any financial help from y'all, they're just wanting a variance so that they can go make a little money while they're trying to rebuild their building. And it would help us tremendously as a church to have that facility to use, so we don't have to go somewhere else either. We've offered to help them all we can. Part of our deal with our ministry is we have no overhead at all. Jordan and I don't take salaries, we don't have any rent, we have no insurance, we, they give us all of that. So we've raised thousands and thousands of dollars that have gone back to the community just because of the barge. We don't, we didn't have, we don't have to do that, but that's the way we want to do business as a church. And we just asked that y'all would please, please, help us out, put us back in business.
Thank you, Rick. Josh Perella.
Josh Perella, 650 North Flamingo Drive. I wasn't going to speak tonight, and then I heard one of the ladies here that was here to speak on behalf of the noise, and I actually had a nice, long conversation with her, which I'll talk to you guys about later too, because I think there's a resolution. But in talking to her, I think the biggest issue we have here right now is we have a dysfunctional city council. And I mean, I don't remember how many of you guys were here, because this isn't the first time we've talked about barge, right? This is like, third, fourth time? And the reason you come to the city council is to get resolution. And the number-one job of city council is to support businesses. And if I had to give you a grade based on the businesses we have here, be an F. I'm a commercial lender. So when JP was speaking, I hope all y'all listened to that, about how crappy our city has run the initiatives to bring businesses to this town. How many have left? How many have gone out of business? How many have not even gone through because they see what we do to other businesses like barge? I'm not really speaking to them today because I don't think that anything you guys have said today is going to sink in to their heads. And it's their job. It is your job to listen to people, not turn your head around and face the wall when a business comes to you with a plan to talk about sound and all the things that they're going to do that would have resolved a lot of the problems with the community. But some of you immaturely turned around, turned your backs and looked the other way. How grown-up of you. You're not serving the community. A lot of you, thank God, we got four spots coming up, so do you, the people who are impassioned to be here, that want Seabrook to grow and be, be a great community. Because we, I agree with JP, man, as a commercial lender, I wish I could do more business here. But the, the people that invest, the people that actually do the construction here, they all, every single one of them, I wish I could bring some of them in to speak to the public, but again, I don't think it'd do much good. None of them want to do business here, not a one. I can't even count how many times I've tried to start a business in here, and part of that's for other reasons, but, you know, old, old Seabrook, man, what a waste, what a freaking waste. Go 30 minutes down the road to Old Town Springs and go see what this place could be. How cool of a little city we could have that would be just as cool as Kima over there, but for all the right reasons. I'm just, I'm tired of seeing it, I'm tired of seeing it, I'm tired of hearing it, and I'm begging y'all, even though, again, I don't think there's going to be much done, but I'm begging y'all to actually listen to your constituents and actually act on it. Don't put your ego in it, because, and I've done volunteer positions, I've been on large volunteer boards, all that, and you know what? Every single time, my ego had to take, be put in a drawer, because that's not what I was there for. I was there to serve the people. A bathroom, a freaking bathroom? I, I wish everyone, you've had 20-something people, 30-something people come up here and talk about a freaking bathroom. That's how shitty our city is, that we can't even negotiate a dang portable bathroom? We're wasting time. And these cities, these businesses deserve better, and the people here deserve better. I would like to also request a review, since it stops with the, apparently, the city manager, a review on the city manager. I mean, if we haven't had businesses come in, I've been here 10 years, I've seen more businesses go out than go in. Our Economic Development Committee, what the hell is that? You've got people on there just sitting on a committee. Do something. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Okay, that's everybody that's signed up. Is there anybody else who wants to say anything?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll move on. 1.1. Report from Mayor, city manager, city staff, city council concerning health, safety, and welfare issues associated with Hurricane Barrel impacts in post-storm recovery efforts. Gail.
Mayor, council, not a lot of updates from last night. Our debris contract has been initiated. We'll start pickups tomorrow, predominantly in the smaller streets that have obstructed the roadway, so in Old Seabrook and some of our small streets off Toddville. And then we'll be publishing additional information on the different areas of town.
Is this questions about the hurricane and how we handled it?
Yes.
Okay, I have a bunch. So we talked on Thursday, but I'm going to go over this again. Why did emergency workers get called in during the height of the storm?
The emergency management for the directors directed their shifts appropriately. So we had 24-hour shifts for PD, 24-hour shifts for our public works. Those directors decide when those employees came in, and they were 6:00 to 6:00 a.m. on both.
Okay, well, I, I hear what you're saying, but the storm hit at 6:00 a.m., 4:00 a.m. So really, while the storm's going in, I think those people should have been called in six hours ahead because we've done that before. So I'm trying to find out why that wasn't done before. Honestly, to me, that's, that's so egregious, it's huge. A guy in Houston died in a car going through high water. So I want to know why it wasn't done six hours before. So why wouldn't he here at midnight if his shift starts at 6:00 in the morning? I don't understand.
We could certainly take that under review with the next hurricane.
The other thing is, during the storm, we had an employee tell a business owner that "You're just shut down." So what, and we know who we're talking about. Why wasn't it said, "Hey, right now, you know you can't open because the place, it's sunk." Why couldn't it have been said, "Hey, let me get back with Gail and Sean, and let's discuss the issues that you got to see how we can get you reopened." That's what, I've been talking about this like the city of no, because other people tell me this, forever. So again, I think that's wrong. You know, it's like kicking someone when they're down. Like, why would you do that? I, I don't get it. So I would like to know why that was done. And because I don't talk to the city employees, that's not my job. I have to direct everything to you, so the buck stops with you. So why did an employee, your employee, tell a business owner who's down and out that, you know, you're just, you're just out, you know, instead of coming up with a solution?
The power stops with the ordinances that he's governed to uphold. So at that time, as an employee, the current ordinance is on the books. He had no other power. That's why we're here tonight.
Okay, so ordinances are super important. Okay. Now, Mr. Attorney, you're a great guy. You know I like you a lot. Obviously, he's going to have to leave right now. He's got to go home. Because if we're going to follow ordinances, which is by our city charter, we have to interview three law firms before we can hire a law firm. When we went back in there, we didn't interview three law firms. We only interviewed one law firm, which was his. So he can't be here because we didn't follow the city charter. So I'm, I'm sorry. I mean, I mean, seriously, we're going to either do the rules or we're not going to do the rules. So explain that to me, please.
Counselor, is that on the agenda?
Yes, this is exactly on the agenda. This is exactly part of what we're doing. See, now, this is where you go and you try to deviate and play these little games. You're going to answer my questions. You're going to answer them right now. Why did we do that? Hey, I'm, Tom, I'm so mad about this stuff. It's unbelievable. And I've gotten the wrong answer from you a lot. So I want to hear exactly what's going on.
I'm, I'm not sure, Joe, that's on the agenda.
It's actually on the agenda. I'm asking you a direct question. Hey, don't, don't try to dodge. I'm asking you a direct question. Why did we hire an attorney without following the city charter? Now, this is what I'm talking about. You're, all day today, we've been talking about you have to follow the rules. You have to follow the laws. You have to follow this. You're not doing that. So I want to know why.
Joe, as, as training, we all understand what the Open Meetings Act is for transparency, for our public. If we're going to discuss the public attorney, a city attorney in the process, I would encourage you to put that on the agenda so that we can publicly post-
Oh, we will, but I just want an answer now. Why didn't we interview three attorney firms when we hired him?
For the benefit of the rest of the community. If you want to debate this, we need to put it on an agenda.
How is this not benefiting the, the citizens are here right now? Okay, I got more questions. I, I see that she's not going to answer. So why were the people on East Meyer allowed to drive under a two-and-a-half-ton pine tree with live wires? Now, per the wires, you said they were live in our conversation on Thursday. You said they were live. So why did we allow citizens to drive under, because that's super dangerous? So I would like to know why citizens were allowed to drive underneath a huge pine tree on live wires?
When the city was made aware of that line and that tree being a dangerous situation, we immediately dispatched our public works, at which time you could see that both of the barricades were put up. We also had barricades throughout the community during the storm that says, "Road closed." We were not able to have enough manpower to put 24/7 police officers at each one of those barricades, including the county road. We have to rely that people will read a sign, understand it's dangerous, and not go past it.
I disagree. I think you should have had a policeman at East Meyer with a dangerous situation. Because with that, you actually went after a councilman for putting up two flagpoles at a memorial because they were quote digging. You said that was, you yourself said that was super dangerous. So obviously, I think a tree over a road is a lot worse. Anyway, so that, that's an answer. Okay, so Red Oak Acres, they have a CIP project going on in there. They have the road torn up. They have, people had all their debris already stacked. I saw a couple in there, they had to be at least in their 70s, stacking up wood along the road, all that. Then there's mud because of these guys digging. Next thing you know, you have the, they're going to continue on with this, this project. I didn't know this was going on, right after the hurricane. This was actually on Tuesday or Wednesday. These guys are out there digging. They hit a gas line. So my question again to you is, there are contractors, and you're ahead of all this. So why would you allow a contractor to move ahead on a CIP project right during, after a hurricane while these people are trying to clean up?
Joe, as we discussed on our phone call, I do not authorize on a daily basis contracts. So that contract was previously approved by city council. It was up to the contractor at that point.
Okay, the contractor told a bunch of the residents, they talked to someone at the city. I don't know who they talked to, but they said they contacted other cities. Those cities said, no, you can't work in our city because we're in an emergency declaration. We're in an emergency declaration, yet we're doing, we're doing that. By the way, they hit the gas line, and so all the people with the Generax and gas, they all get shut down. Now, you know I was livid about that when we talked on Thursday. I was, I'm just like, how tone deaf can you be? And I say it like that because you just got to think like that. And if you, they said they called, and you said, no, we have to continue on with this project. I disagree. I don't think we should continue on with a project during a emergency declaration. That's just me. But I've gotten an answer. Okay, the communication failed. I, I talked to a guy at Dairy Queen. I like to kind of hang out at Dairy Queen. My wife gets mad, but I kind of like those guys. But anyway, they came in and they go, wow, you know, Laporte's been really great with communication. They give two or three communiques a day. They do it email, phone, and social media. Theirs actually has a thing you can give feedback on. When I asked you about this, I said, hey, our communication doesn't seem to be getting out very well. You said something to the effect of, one of our emergency management people tried a new system, and it even failed. Well, it can't fail. You know, since 1980, I looked it up, we've had 81 tropical cyclones issues that have come through this area since 1980. It's, it's a foregone conclusion. We're going to have something like this. We're always going to have something like this. We got to be way better prepared, and that communication didn't work. I said, sometimes we even have to think outside the box, meaning put a speaker in the back of a truck, drive out to a neighborhood and start talking. The people would have listened to that. They just want something. But they were getting nothing. And I, it wasn't good enough. We should have had, we should have had a meeting prior to the hurricane coming, once we knew. We should have had one during and a bunch after. We, this, yesterday was the first time we met as a group. That, I think that's wrong too. So we got to do better. The food and water distribution and the cool plate, the cooling center, very good. That was very good. I, I like that. People are saying about four days late, but, you know, the cooling center was way before the food and water distribution. But what I'm hearing is that the people liked the cooling center, but the food and water distribution came late. Now, I understand that's not you, and it's not the city. It's where we're getting it from, the county. But that's one of the things they said. So then my other part is, safety is the number one concern. And we, but we put a barricade up on Toddville, but like I said, we, we put a small barricade at East Meyer, but it didn't work. And so when I asked you about a policeman, I think we had that. Because we have, what I've been told, a $4.5 million surplus. We're in a, we're in a disaster. If we have a surplus of money, that could pay for the officer. So I, I'm really, I don't understand. I, I just don't understand this. And then the last one is, you have accepted the, to be the economic development head, and you're the city manager. That's two full-time jobs. Jackie brought it up, that there's no way. I say no way you can do it, and you, and Jackie said the same thing. They blasted Jackie last time, council did, for even suggesting this. But I've been to every single business in Seabrook, and I've been to every neighborhood in Seabrook since the hurricane started, since Monday. I want to know how many businesses that you've been to, to ask them how they're doing from this.
Let me go back. I think I've got more information on your communications I'd like to address. So on Facebook, we had a total of 37 posts. We've had 193,000 impressions. We had 25,000 engagement, 188,000 on our reach. We've had 22,000 clicks and 1.5 thousand on our reactions. Just to make sure that everybody's aware, there was communications going out. We understand that with some power, we've had some issues. On our website, we had over 11,000 on users go into the weather page. We had 9.6 thousand users on all the updates and news blasts. So there's a lot of information that was going out by the city staff. We also want to mention, we had staff here 24/7. Part of that staff that was here 24/7 was pushing out these thousands of impressions that we're getting on the multiple communications. So I, I want to make sure that the public and council is aware. Again, we aim to do better at every disaster. Every disaster is different. But it is critical, and it has always been critical, to this staff to get communications out. And so these statistics serve to let council know and the public know, we were not sitting here not pushing out communications. We are aware that some of those texts did not go through our discussions on the two different systems and how they went out. Yes, there were problems, and we are aware of that. We are aware that other cities had similar problems as well. But we were here pushing out information constantly. The mayor was in the EOC. The director of emergency management was in the EOC. We had multiple phone calls with Commissioner Adrian. We were on multiple phone calls with every mayor going through all the similar issues. Most cities on those phone calls had more power outages than we did. And we were desperately working with the commissioners to make sure that we got the supplies as quickly. Our emergency management coordinator, or director, was on the phone constantly trying to be the first in line to get the water, get the MREs, and try to make sure when that was replenished, we were first on there to get that. I think that was shown by the 18-wheelers that rolled up, and we were able to do that. So our team has worked extremely hard. Police department, the public works has been on 24-hour shifts to make sure that this community did not have any issue with the sewer system, making sure that the backup generators were properly pushing at each lift station so that no one had any disruptions whatsoever. Our staff has worked tirelessly through this storm, and I'm extremely appreciative of them. Every single one of them. And I will stand here and be appreciative of them. Is there absolutely, absolutely things we can always do better? I don't think anyone in a leadership position on this board or in this community that holds a leadership position would speak otherwise. If you're a leader, you always know you can do better. That's a sign of leadership. And we will do better. We are taking these comments, and we appreciate the comments from you, from council, and the public on what we can do better. But this team, this staff that we have, and the council and the mayor for the EOC, did a tremendous job. I thank you for that.
Yeah. Can I make a comment real quick as well, if you don't mind? As soon as the storm ended, I left my house when I knew I could and it would be safe, and I drove the neighborhoods. There was areas that I couldn't get to. We understand. It's a storm, that stuff. This was a unique storm, and I want to say thank you to all, your entire team, because I did come up here, and I witnessed every single one of them working diligently. And they didn't even want to take time to talk to me, and that's fine. I'm, I understand. Because they were all working and pushing information out and doing all that. And so this was a unique storm in its own, just because of the wind. And I was out without power, and our, obviously, cell towers were down. So there was communication error, not on our part or the city's, because people weren't getting it because of cell towers being down, whether it was AT&amp;T or Verizon or any of those. They were all down for weeks, and that made it difficult. Even though they were, you were pushing that out, we weren't getting it. So, you know, it, it made it complicated and very hard. So I do want to commend your staff, and you guys did an excellent job. Yes, there's always room for improvement. There is. And those are the things that we will discuss and go through. But thank you again for all you guys, what you did. I appreciate it. Gail, thank you. Everybody did an amazing job with the city, and we continue to do amazing. Thank you.
My last question, my last question was number eight. Did the generators go out here at City Hall? Did a generator ever go out?
So we have a generator here at City Hall, and it did intermittently go out at different times, which that's been typical. So as I've been reporting at all the regular council meetings, we have over a million dollars in grants waiting for new generators that will replace City Hall. We'll be putting a new generator at the community house that we have not had before, since we used that for Hurricane Ike, and then now again as a cooling station. The fire department had a generator that ran nonstop when they had power out. Luckily, there was no interruptions in power over there. Again, that's getting to end of life, and so we're excited for the grants that are coming in and the new generators that we'll get throughout the city. The generators that are circulated through the lift stations, we do not have a generator on each one of those, but we have generator hookups. So when the power went out, that, we had to circulate those mobile generators throughout the lift stations to keep the sewer going properly until certain lift stations were restored. So again, there was a plan for that. We have multiple mobile generators, and there was any interruption of service.
And then you were going to answer one last question, but Mike got in there. No, it's okay.
Is that it, Joe?
No, you were going to answer one of the questions. You, you answered the one, but you didn't answer this. You said, you, you, you went back and you go, let me address the communication, but you were going to answer something else. I'm trying to remember which one that was.
Oh, I'm sorry.
About two jobs, being the city manager and the economic development person.
Well, I appreciate the question. I'm going to tell you what the city attorney question was as well. It's for transparency. If you want to get into, I would request that you put that on the agenda.
Okay, I have a, I have a comment on the storm. This storm was very unique in the sense that we really didn't know, the weather service didn't know where the storm was headed. It kept moving more east. We, we tracked that storm for two days prior, 24/7, and the storm kept moving. At one point, it was going down into Mexico. The next time, it was going down into Corpus, and it was going down into Matagorda. It kept moving. It, we didn't have a pinpoint as to how much damage or how this was going to be until that morning. So we did get a lot of the troops and city staff out at that point. It was a different hurricane. We were never expecting those kind of winds. Even the weather service wasn't expecting those kind of winds. So the reports kept moving, the storm, and we kept reacting to it. The closer it got, the more we reacted to it, you know. And so that's, that's the reason why we were late in getting some, maybe some of the, some of the crews out and some of, some of staff out. Staff was, I was up there, you know, probably 24, 20 hours a day, throughout the day. I did get home in the evening for a few hours sleep. What I witnessed was, every couple of minutes, we were putting out information. We were, we were putting out social media information. We were putting out alerts. We were putting out phone calls. We were putting out all sorts of messages. Kudos to, to, to our, to our staff that was doing it. There was a lot of information going out. We lost a generator. A generator sprung a radiator leak, you know. Things like that happen. But it kept going out on, on low water pressure. So, so again, we, we, we kept reacting to everything that was coming up. Those are things that you can't plan on. You can't plan to have a radiator leak in the middle of a storm. And, and so I think staff did a good job reacting to all the issues that kept coming up. Could we have done better? Yeah. I, I was the one that went up there. We witnessed that tree, Gail and I, when we were doing a tour of the city, that tree on, on East Meyer going down over the wires. We immediately called staff to put a barricade up. We watched the guy go under it while we were there, before the barricade went up, coming the other direction. You know, you can't fix stupid. I'm sorry. But when you see a, when you see a power line dangling about 10 feet off the ground, and you're going to bring an SUV under it, I, I'm sorry, but you, you deserve what you get. And, and no matter, no matter what we do, no matter- And, and no matter, no matter what we do, no matter what we did, no matter what we did to protect that area from being, uh, from people going under it, we, we tried everything. Every time we went back, somebody had moved the barricades. Every time. And, and there was times I put them back. So you know, I, I'm, I'm sorry that people act like that and I'm sorry you react like that, but you know, we can't fix everything. So.
Why would you put an officer there since people keep moving? It's a good question. Good question. You cut down, why not put the officer there?
We, our, our officers were all busy doing other things besides blocking traffic. We're not traffic cops. We're, 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 we're not.
We know that from all the rest.
That's right. And so, and so we, our staff was busy, our officers were busy twenty-four seven, they were out on the roads, they were patrolling the roads and, and that's all we can say. I mean, uh, putting somebody standing in front of a barricade doesn't make a lot of sense. So that's my, that's my two cents and I'm sorry.
I, I just wanna echo what Mike, uh, said regarding staff. I think they did an excellent job and I don't think anybody's got a full appreciation for the hours that they put in. My house, I had no wifi. I had to get, drive up to the Little League Field or CVS to use my cellphone. So I didn't get the messages, but I've been here since seventy-four and I've been through a few storms and this was unique and it was different. And I did drive by Meyer and I saw the tree down and I saw some people going under it. Uh, and I saw the barricades go up pretty quick and I saw some people moving it. I mean, you, we can't be everywhere at once because we also had barricades on Lower Toddville and people were driving down Main to see how bad it was. Um, a lot of sightseers, um, people from in the community and people from out of the community. Um, and in an emergency, and ask yourself, were your preparations perfect? Are there some things you could've done better? Uh, and, and that's what we have to do, is we have to take stock and say, okay, this was kinda unique. Uh, it wasn't like Harvey. We didn't flood during Harvey, everybody else did. Uh, there was a run on the grocery stores, on Aldi's and Kroger and they were outside limiting how many people could come in. Um, it was, it was, again, it wasn't Harvey, it wasn't Ike. But we do, we do come together and we gotta come together as a community and, and all pick up the rope and pull the same way. But that's just my feeling.
Um, I will say, I was, I've been very pleased with a lot of the residents who've came together and, uh, made it easier on everybody. They lent, you know, lent a hand, they lent their house, washing machine, internet, whatever you could, you know, whatever they could give, a warm meal. Um, that month, so Tuesday, I find out, uh, Red Oak Acres gets that, um, has a non-essential construction going on, uh, after it's been declared a disaster and then they hit the, the gas line. I don't, if, do you guys, when they, people are on generators, they hit a natural gas line at, in front of a person's house that is running a natural gas generator. There was gas bubbling out of this ground. I mean, this could've been really bad. They got lucky. I don't know why, that was a complete negligence on why they did not stop that. Even after we find out that it did go and they did hit a gas line, you know, Gail's response was, I understand everyone's concerns and how upset those residents are at this time during the heat, if they have a generator. It would be best if we allow our contractor to stay on schedule and complete this job. This is beginning of hurricane season and this could only get worse on how many they are forecasting. To me, there are people with trees on their houses, they have no power, they have so much tree debris in there, cause it's a very established neighborhood. To me, that is, I had to, you know, my blood pressure was like, are you kidding me? And then I had to pretty much throw a fit to the mayor and to Gail, for you guys to stop, to stop the project. Cause you guys were just okay with moving forward and that's a problem. I was very disappointed in, in city management with that. And then also finding out that, you know, our building department on the phone, um, told the barge, don't even think about doing business in the yard because your, um, your business license is tied to the barge. That's, that was called for. They, that he should've not had the authority to, to make that comment or to say that. So they've been out quite a bit, uh, of time now, but I'll, let me get back up, we're still talking about hurricane stuff. So what, the, the huge part of the power outages is because of these trees that are landing on lines. What is our current sc, tree trimming schedule? And we need to make it a lot more frequent.
Is that a question?
Yeah.
Okay. So watching the general news, I guess you can see, we've been on the calls with Adrian Garcia, um, and that's obviously a southeast Texas issue right now with Center Point. So, uh, from what I'm understanding, the governor's also asking that question. What is the tree trimming schedule? So we've been building a bunch of calls, um, obviously for unhappy residents, the timing, the coming back on and ultimately where, where these trees were falling. Uh, we communicate that up, uh, Adrian Garcia's communicating that up, our state reps are hearing that and this is something that they're opening an investigation. So, um, Seabrook is concerned, but Seabrook is working with our partners at a county level and a state level to carry that concern up and hopefully get those answers.
So we don't have a schedule right now?
No, we don't. So Center Point, uh, is not giving cities or county that schedule and I don't think the last time I watched the news, the governor.
Okay. Um, it's obviously a big thing we need to, to work on. We can save that for a different time. I, I also agree, the communication was, was not good. I, I had to, I kept saying, we're not getting, you know, nobody get on the phone, but even you could've put out the big, the lit signs off a generator and saying, you know, go to the community house for the cooling center or things like that. And even today, I asked, are you going to send a text alert out for the debris pickup that's scheduled tomorrow that you sent an email out and you, I think you liked it or said yes? And still, that was at one-thirty, it's seven-thirty and it's coming tomorrow, no text. So you know, it's, it's not, it's not uniform. You're not like a standard going to, through media, through social media, through phone, through text. It's not all the way around and I don't know why, why it's not. Also, um, like when the MREs and the water and ice was depleted on the first day, which was like a couple ca, or I heard it was like six cases, which was really unfortunate. They ran out in thirty minutes and it took you over two hours, I think it was. It was, we knew in an hour they had run out, it was another hour before you put out the post. I know you said it was Kevin and Amanda's, but job, I mean, isn't that just a press of a button? It shouldn't be, you know, people are driving out, you know, without power at their house, they're driving over here trying to get meals and then, you know, things could've happened quicker. It's like there's no sense of urgency. Like there's no sense of empathy with, with the Red Oak Acres. And the barge, this is urgent, you know, and I feel like they're, they're just trying to choke them out and I, and I don't appreciate that. Also, no, I guess we're not gonna, I'm off agenda again. Okay. Um, you know, I asked the mayor, I will say, Joe, did a fantastic job. He was out there hitting, uh, the ground, knocking on doors, checking on all the businesses for day after day after day. And I asked Tom in a text, mayor, are you checking on people and, and the businesses? And you didn't answer me. Cause no, I haven't seen you out there, nobody's seen you out there. In fact, you and Gail have had a lot of social media, um, things to say about, you know, in four days, I think is when you put, four or five days after this whole thing, you put out a video. You know, Robin and Kima, the mayor over there, she's driving around in the golf cart handing out waters, checking on people, you know, but you're absent. I've been disappointed with how post-storm this city has handled things. And if you guys think it's all okay, your head's in the sand. Because I'm, I think it was, could've done, be done so much better. And, and I voiced that to, to Gail and to the mayor over and over through this whole storm, since we didn't, you know, violate the open meetings act. So I think we could've done a lot better. I do appreciate the good-hearted people in Seabrook that, you know, volunteered and, and did, did good in the city, but a lot can be better.
FYI, I, I got my text on the trash pickup at one o'clock. And I also got a phone call.
I got a phone call.
I got text and phone call.
Well, either way, that's also didn't happen until like Friday or so. And I'm like, why are we, I've only gotten six texts all week, you know? There was, I can go back and get some numbers for you, buddy, but I promise you that the communication was lacking.
Well, that, that's what happened. When I talked to the people, I talked to the businesses, that's what they told me, that's why I'm bringing this up today. And one last thing, Gail, when we talked, I said, you know, there were certain things that I thought could've been done because I have this type of training. Um, I was a Texas state guardsman for ten years and one of the things that, that was what our guard unit did, these exact things. So I brought this on purpose because I think it's a pretty big deal, but this is my certificate to be in the guard and then these are my four MEMS Academy like that. And MEMS Academy is not just some, you take a class for thirty minutes or an hour and take a test. This is twenty-four college level, twenty-six hours of college.
Their question, I mean, we, we have our staff that has that as well.
Okay. So they actually have MEMS. I wanna see their certificates then. I definitely need to see them because this is a big deal to get a MEM certified. It's military emergency management. That's a big deal. So they, they would have these college credits, so I definitely wanna see it, cause I have it. But the, the, the reason I bring that up is, is I also have sixty-three hours in weather. I've taken a lot of weather classes, cause I'm a pilot and I never wanted to have a crash because of, of, you know, getting into weather. You gotta expect the unexpected. I'm totally trained in that. So you always expect something that you don't think could happen. So to say, you know, the hurricane changed and all this kinda stuff, well, we gotta expect that. And like I said, we have eighty-one, that's just to nineteen eighty. I've lived here since nineteen sixty-seven, longer than almost anybody in this room. I've lived here for a long time, have been through a ton of these. They do all sorts of things. Some it's way more, uh, tide, some it's way more wind, whatever. But I didn't think this was handled well at all. And I, personally, I, it, it might sound weird to some, but I don't think you should be the city manager. I think you should resign.
Yes.
I really do. I, I don't, but this was too big of a deal. This was way too big of a deal and I don't think you should be the city manager. I'd like to see you resign, seriously.
She doesn't need two jobs either. Yeah. We can't handle one job.
I'm that pissed about this.
All right, anybody else?
Bullshit. Anybody else? Two-point-O, the consent agenda. Two-point-one, approve the minutes of the July second, twenty-twenty-four regular city council meeting and the July second, twenty-twenty-four joint city council meeting and planning and zoning commission.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. All in favor? Unanimous. Three-point-O, new business, uh, well, this item was considered and approved on the July fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four emergency city council meeting. There's no need for further consideration at this time. And the same thing with three-point-two. This item was considered and approved at the July fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four emergency city council meeting and there is no need for further considerations this time. Four-point-O, routine business. Four-point-one, establish future meeting dates and agenda items.
Mayor and council, uh, your next meeting is a special city council meeting on July twenty-third at six and the following week, on July thirty-first, there's a special city council meeting at six as well.
Okay. I'd like to add an agenda item. A request for a report from the city staff regarding the initial request made by the representatives of Barge two-ninety-five to include a printed copy of that request to be presented to each council member.
I'd also like to make, um, a request or a motion to, uh, I'd like to make a motion to call a special council meeting as soon as possible, if it's Friday or Monday. Um, I don't, I think we just have to have seventy-two hours ahead of time to post the agenda to discuss a variance for the barge, two-ninety-five slash the yard.
Okay. Thank you.
I think it couldn't wait two weeks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
You can just request.
Wanting a special council meeting before the next meeting, so.
Correct.
Okay.
You requested. Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Fire.
All in favor? Thank you. We are adjourned at seven forty-four. Why?